For pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue Volk, please.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Present.
And Mayor DeVore?
I'm here. Mike, you need to add item F to the agenda, correct?
That's correct. G-Drive Storage Tank Improvements Engineering.
Will that all make a motion for a presentable add?
Of course.
Any other discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Mayor DeVore?
Yes. Citizen Discussion for items on the agenda. No old business, new business, blatantly is our body of presentation.
Yes, Peter Hafner here from Redoubled Hefner. Sorry. He's here to present your annual audit. And we did put the whole audit in your packet and it'll be online tomorrow. But I'd turn over to Peter.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I represent Redoubled Hefner, the firm of certified public accountants that conducted the audit for the city for the year ended June 30th, 2021. We audited the Leighton Power and issued that report separately and presented that report a couple of months ago. And today I'm here to talk a little bit about your audit and then to address any questions you may have. I wanted to point out that this year we didn't identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses with your system of internal controls over financial reporting, which is positive. And also we provide a, what I refer to as a clean opinion on page one of the financial statements. And that is that the financial statements present fairly and all material respects the financial position, results of operations, cash flows were applicable over governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, the component unit, as well as the aggregate remaining funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And I'm summarizing the last paragraph on page one. The opinion's two pages long, talks about our responsibilities and your responsibilities. But that's what I would refer to as a clean opinion. And to walk you through some of the financial information, I put together some slides. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in between or as we proceed through the slides. And I was going to point out which page the information comes from. So on the next slide, this is a picture of your bottom line. And what I want to point out is this information comes from page nine. And this is summarizing all of your governmental funds into a single column and including the internal service operations, such as the motor pool, and you have some OPEP funding and an internal service fund. And so what that red line represents is the extent of your investment in capital assets, less outstanding debt, less depreciation on those capital assets. And so you can see the last couple of years, we've made substantial investment in capital. A chunk of that, a large portion of that is the showboat. But what's positive is that the line is continuously increasing, keep up with inflation and depreciation. A straight line is good, increasing is better. And the blue line shows the restricted balance. And that's primarily dollars that are restricted for a specific purpose. And you have your Act 51 funding, as well as showboat funding that came in. And as those dollars were utilized, that line will go up and down. And then the bottom line, we have unrestricted net assets. And that represents primarily putting your pension and OPEP liability on your books. So you can see around 14 at Dove, and that was the pension being put on. Then 18 at Dove, that's the OPEP being put on. And now you can see it's increasing. Hopefully you get to zero or better in the future. But for the most part, you have all of your liabilities on the books. And those pension and OPEP liabilities historically were never included on the financial statements. So you implemented some standards, resulted in that decline of the green line. The next slide that we have, this is a look at pages 10 and 11. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You said that the pension liabilities were not reflected in the...
Yes, that is exactly correct. So...
Starting...
Pre-14, the only time you would, so approximately 2004, if you didn't fund your pension as required by the actuary, you would put a liability on your books. Well, the state requires you to fund it. So no one in Michigan typically was putting a liability on their books. And then the standards changed to say, what's the entire liability and what are the assets out there? So historically, it was just if you didn't contribute as required, you would put a liability. Now they're measuring your liability versus the assets.
Okay. So they changed the rule?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It was the, it was GASB 43 is what I always refer to.
Right. There's a number of GASB statements. That's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So recently, they've been bringing along approximately three a year new standards. But the big ones were when the pension and the other post-employment benefit lines needed to be put on the books. That was like 14 and then 16 or so. So that's what resulted in that reduction in the balance.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. Here is a look at your business type activities. And this again is from page nine. And so it's summarizing all of your enterprise fund operations, water, sewer, electric. And so again, you can see you're investing in capital assets. And that is exceeding the depreciation on those assets. And again, I want to point out that red line represents the net investment in capital. So that's the capital assets, less the debt, less accumulated depreciation. So this year, you paid down approximately $300,000 in governmental fund debt, approximately $600,000 in enterprise fund debt or business type activity debt. And Leighton Power also issued a note for $450,000 on the current year. But you can see basically that shows you're investing in the infrastructure for the city. And here you can see there's a slight restricted balance. That's related to the revenue bonds that are for the electric utility. And then the unrestricted balance, you can see that clicked up in the current year. And we're going to take a look at each of your enterprise funds to see, you know, which ones increased that balance for you this year. Now, the next slide that we have, this shows selected fund, fund balance. And this information is presented on page 13. And so we're just tracking the largest of your funds that are governmental in nature. So your general fund, major, local street, fund balance, year to year. And you can see it's increased over the past several years. And it's important to have fund balance to cover those times when you're not collecting property taxes or you have a project to do. So the next slide that we have, this is your expenditures by function in the general fund. See, your biggest investment is public safety. And then we have general government, public works, culture and recreation, and then other, which can kind of bounce around with grants and things of that nature. And that information is from page 14. And the next slide that we have is a look at your business type activities. You can see the current year, 2021, or the year under audit, had a positive change in fund, or net position. And if we take a look at the next slide, water fund had a positive change in net position. The next slide, Leighton Power had a positive change in net position. And so across your business type activities, they all had a positive change in the bottom line. Keep in mind, the expenses are including depreciation, as well as portions of those pension and OPEP liabilities. So they can bounce around a little bit. Last year was a good year for your pension plans. So you had a lot of earnings. Those will be smoothed out over approximately five years. And that's reflected in the deferred inflows on your financial statements. So they do provide a little bit of smoothing in the case of changes in assumptions, investment income, and excessive expectations, and other changes to the plan. From my perspective, the audit went quite smoothly. It was minimal adjustments during the audit process. We did come out, perform audit procedures, and then we needed to await an actuarial evaluation on your other post-employment benefit line. So you had that done externally this year. So when that came in, I was the delay in not jumping right back on it, but wanted to deliver you results before the end of the year. And the sooner the better. Next year, you could roll forward your other post-employment benefit plan information. So you could avoid an actuarial evaluation. That's your option. I think the next slide just provides a little PR for us. Are there any questions I can add or ask about the audit process or the results of the audit or information in the audit report? Thank you, thank you, and your staff.
And the fire authority, we appreciate that too.
Oh, thank you. Have a merry Christmas.
Fire station key cards. Mike?
If you're not aware, the City of Lowell owns the building where the fire station resides. I received a request from Chief Wigerow from the Lowell Area Fire Department to purchase the same key card system the city uses for the police station, DPW building, showboat, and city hall for the fire station. The fire department has received a proposal from Allied Universal for the system. Total cost to add the system is $18,098.24. This was not budgeted in the current budget. In addition, the request is being made only to the City of Lowell, rather than all three municipalities. The reason for this is because the building is owned by the city and the quote received is valid until January 2nd, 2022. And there's an anticipated 10% increase for this after the date the quote is valid. I'm going to go into a little bit more explanation in the next agenda item. So I'm not asking you to take action on it at this time. But I am recommending the city purchase the security card system from Allied Universal for a cost not to exceed $18,098.24 under the next action item. So if you want, I can just dovetail into that.
Yeah, can I go real quick on the key cards? So the discussion is that the fire department is becoming a BLS agency instead of a MFR. So they'll be able to do a little bit more medically before the ambulance gets there. So there's going to be drugs, narc and glucose. With a key card system, you can tell who went in, when they left, supplies and stuff like that, restocking the trucks, checking them out. It's just an accountability thing. Plus they'll have access to city hall for fire alarms or the DPW building for whatever they need. So it's just a way to get everybody on the same...
As a representative at the fire authority, do you think it's fair that we're putting the bill for the whole thing?
Hey, do. It's our building and it's a city system. But at the same time, the fire authority has been pretty generous with projects in the past. The floors were done in the building through the authority. And all the demo and removal was done by fire guys on their own time. So to take this one expenditure, I don't think is a huge ask.
Yeah. When Shannon brought this to my attention, I, I'll be honest, I really wasn't concerned about, normally, you know, I do agree, you know, in this instance, the building's kind of different because we own the building. It's the one asset that when the authority was created, didn't transfer over. So there's a number of times where things come up where it's kind of a gray area when dealing with this building. So I didn't have an issue with it when it went, came from me.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to one aside.
So in November, I mentioned the last fiscal year, we had approximately $200,000 in fund balance added to the general fund, giving us approximately $1.2 million in reserve. This was at the end of 1920 fiscal year. At the time, we were 33% funded. We had a million, we had a million dollars prior to these funds being added to the reserve. Last year, we took $75,000 of that $200,000 and applied it towards the fire truck purchase and the remaining $125,000 to make a payment towards the unfunded pension liability. As the final amounts were tallied this year, it appears these payments never needed to be made from the fund reserve, but were from our 2020, 2020, 2021 revenues. If you recall, preparing the prior year's budget for 2020 and 2021, we significantly reduced revenues from revenue sharing and the Lowell Leighton Power pilot. In actuality, we received approximately $140,000 more from these than budgeted. We also saw an additional $12,000 more than budgeted in personal property. Additionally, we received approximately $220,000 in funds through the CARES Act. And we also accounted the $28,000 from marijuana excise tax before transferring it to the local streets as general fund revenue. When I reviewed expenses, it appeared some actual expenditures for personnel costs were significantly less than budgeted, which reduced overall expenditures. I believe this is due to eliminating a full-time position and the fact we had two budgeted positions that we didn't fill until the last eight months of the fiscal year. It has something, it also has something to do with how DPW members charge their time. As a result of this, we had an audited, an audited unassigned fund reserve or fund balance of $1,401,465, or 38.3% of this year's projected general fund capture. This is now $401,465 more than what I had recommended we keep in fund balance last year. Our financial policy requires we keep 15% of our general fund captured in reserve annually. If you recall, the city has worked very hard to build the fund balance to an acceptable level. About 10 years ago, the city was in a very dangerous predicament where there was only an unassigned fund balance of approximately $20,000. If we make prudent expenditures to address needs and priorities of the city with the unassigned fund balance and keep a million dollars in reserve, we would still have a 27.4% unassigned fund balance. I'd like the city council to consider the following expenditures from the additional unassigned fund balance. $141,683.38 for a surplus payment towards the city's unfunded pension liability. I would recommend making this payment prior to December 31st, 2021, as this is the end of the actuarial year for our pension account and will positively impact our funding level. Another $141,683.38 transferred to the local street fund. This would be in addition to the $250,000 from budgeted from projected general fund and marijuana excise tax revenue we have already budgeted to this account this fiscal year. This will assist us in ensuring the street projects we are planning to complete in the next few years will be funded. This current fiscal year, we are budgeting from this fund to repair Heffron, Roberta Jane, and Faith Street. We still plan to move forward with these projects, most likely next July. We are planning to budget and repair all cross streets between Washington and Lafayette, along with Lafayette and the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 fiscal years. These funds would help ensure we have the financial means to address, financial means to address these needs. $100,000 can be set aside to address additional testing we will need to complete next fiscal year at Ware Road. Renee Pewett will be at the January 3rd, 2022 city council meeting to provide an update on the current status of this and steps we will need to address next fiscal year at the site. And then $18,098.24 to install a key card system at the fire station at the request of the Lowell Area Fire Department, as I explained earlier. I would recommend the Lowell City Council approve the expenditures of $401,465 from our unassigned general fund balance in the manner I explained it. And I'll take any questions.
I don't have a question, but I think you do a fantastic job of balancing unfunded pension and local streets when we're moving around money. And it's cool to see, and I hope everybody out there sees it and that you're making it a priority to do it.
There are two biggest needs. There are two biggest needs.
Mike, these are, these are great projects. Was there anything else that was under consideration that maybe did make this list? And you thought about so the public knows we're willing to move it forward?
Sure. Sure. I thought about, I did think about putting the money for the HVAC upgrades for the library and for this building as part of the, for the next couple of years that we have to, I did consider that. My thought process is by, at least with $100,000, we'll frame that up. We should be, I mean, I'm not as, right now, I know, next fiscal year, at least through the heavily, or the proposal A reflation, rate inflation multiplier is going to show up three point, it says that we're going to see a 3.3% increase in property tax revenues. As you, as you know, the proposal A allows the property taxes to increase 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. In this, in this case, 3.3% is pretty high. Probably one of the highest I've seen probably since about 2008, 2009. So we're going to, we're going to have some inflation built into the budget next year. That being said, we're going to have expenditures going out that are going to meet that inflation as well. But $100,000 will help. My thought process was, was probably when I start preparing, at least, we're only going to do one of those projects next year. My thought was probably splitting it 50/50 between the city and the DDA to meet the repair needs. So I'm not as concerned freeing up, you know, freeing up a budget in that, in that manner. So that's kind of the reason, that was kind of the reason why I did it the way I did it.
Thanks.
So Ware Road, $100,000 to that.
You being conservative?
Um, right now, I have it estimated at about 105 for actually.
Seriously?
Yeah. It's, it's, they're coming next meeting. They will come and explain it to you, but they can explain it to you much better than I can. But as I've said before, this is the gift that keeps on giving.
Yes, we're not going to be done with this anytime soon.
We may, actually, in a couple of years. But I'll defer to BLDI.
Because I would like to see maybe that $100,000 bump up. I need another 20 grand just to make sure we're covered for that Ware Road. Because there's things that we're just not going to know about and they're going to be huge if they do hit.
Right. And that's kind of where I, when I had kind of, when I had talked to Renee about how much we think we were going to need to spend next year, she thought it was about 105 total. She'll talk about that in the next meeting, but...
Just next year.
Just next year, yeah. And I, I mean, we don't know what our fund balance will be next year. I mean, we may come in ahead again next year and maybe we can address it next year. But my thought was, you know, my understanding is the two, I mean, or at least the way I, from where I sit, the two biggest issues obviously are, you know, that I sit, that I have to deal with are obviously the unfunded pension liability, local streets, and then right there behind us, Ware Road.
Yeah. No, I don't have a problem with the unfunded liability, getting that paid down. That's a good move. And getting more roads done. Right now, it seems like a good time, but that Ware Road is still...
Yep.
The unknown.
Yeah. I'd much rather be a little padded for it than un padded.
Which you do have, you still do have a million dollars in fund, in fund reserves. So if you had it, if it became an issue, you can always, you can always go and get, use it. I mean, that's why we keep, you know, we keep a pretty healthy fund balance. So from where I sit, where I see things, I don't, I'm not as...
You think that's a comfortable...
I'm very comfortable with what I'm recommending.
Any other questions? Motion to approve the expenditures of $401,465.
How many types of motion? Support.
Any other questions for Mike? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
All right. Water bill?
I received notification from the Kent County Community Action that $1.7 million for low-income household water, wastewater assistance is available. These funds will be allocated as direct payments to municipal water, wastewater utilities for low-income households who are at risk of utility shut-off or non-payment. This program would be eligible to households who are eligible at 150% of the poverty level or below. The maximum payment per fiscal year is $650, which would include any fees needed for reconnection. One stipulation is the municipality who receives payment for the affected household must guarantee service for at least 90 days after receipt of the payment. KCCA will work with the applicant directly to ensure they qualify for the program or are in jeopardy of being connected. If the city is interested in having this program eligible for residents in need of this service, the city would need to approve the attached agreement and the program will remain eligible, will remain in place until September 30th, 2023. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council to partner with Kent County Community Action for them to provide assistance to low-income residents of the City of Lowell to prevent utility shut-off for non-payment of water and sewer services. So now normally what happens is, we do have a couple of these instances that come up, not many. But when it does happen, they do go, you know, a lot of times we refer them to FRAM, but this is just another avenue for people who are in, you know, who are in this type of hardship that they can, that we can get them to, up to speed on their usage.
And it gives them 90 days peace of mind and KCCA does all the work.
Correct. Yeah. We don't do anything.
No brainer.
That's what I thought, too.
I make a motion to get involved with...
Now support.
Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
All right. Dan, Recreation Master update.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The current five-year Recreation Master Plan, there's one more year to go, and it will expire at the end of the next calendar year. The process to update that takes quite some time. So we want to get started on it now, so that we're ready to build on 2023. The document hopefully will, when completed, will give us an inventory of available recreational opportunities, list the needs of the community, and provide us with a roadmap to follow for making needed improvements to the community we'd like to see. At the December 14th Parks Board meeting, the board discussed getting started on the update, on updating the current plan. We received proposal from Mr. Andy Moore from Williams Works to help with the development of the new master plan. He assisted the city back in 2017 when the current plan was put together. He's provided us a list of services to help the city work through the process, such as gathering community information, receiving public input, working to define goals and objectives, developing the action plan, providing us with a finalized plan that should meet the needs of our group of partners. For the public input, we're considering two options this year, this time around, to allow the community to be part of the process. In the past, and again for this upcoming plan, we want to use input taken by way of online community survey. Basically, it'd be something on these What pages, a Facebook page to say, go here and answer these questions. Anybody can do it. You know, area is basically a multiple answer question, and then there's an opportunity for people to provide input. That's what they did only, that's the only way they took public input last time. This time, we also want to do a whole focus groups, three focus groups, to invite the public to give input and then be able to sit down and have a discussion with these in this small group setting, so people can voice their ideas in person and give opt-in for the discussion, vetting of ideas. Park Board thought it was a good idea to have different opportunities to obtain the public input. The process to develop the plan will take about six to eight months, goal to have the document approved by MDNR and adopted by the city by the end of the calendar year. We budgeted half the cost to put together the plan in the current fiscal year with the thought to have the other half coming for the next fiscal year. Williams Works and Andy Moore are very familiar with our community and the Recreation Master Plan Development Process.
Didn't we, was it the Fairgrounds? Didn't we put a survey in with water and electric bills that mailed back? I thought when we did the focus group...
We had an open house.
We had... Because that's another way, if people don't get online. I don't, I know we had a ton of, or we had surveys you could take with you too, I think, in the back.
We did that, yeah.
There was a little table down.
When they came, they did have, yeah. And then we allowed people...
Blank piece of paper, draw what you think is going to do it for that part.
Yep.
Just an idea.
Yeah. I know that there's more than just that part is the consideration of the other five-year plans, so...
Any other questions for Dan?
I make a motion that we approve the amount not... I make a motion that we approve the amount not to exceed 10.4 to develop the plan.
I support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, G Drive Engineer?
This is the one that came up at the last meeting on priority after the budget was set up, so we tried to scramble to get it included. If you recall, back in July of this year, the Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy, Air Friends, and Eagle performed their annual sanitary survey of water system, which includes the water plant and the distribution system. From that review of the entire system, Eagle came up with a significant difference, deficiency, excuse me, and two other deficiencies that needed correction. They also unfortunately sent us an administrative consent order to make upgrades to the pumping situation at G Drive Station and to complete our updated reliability study. The station improvements, which are the significant deficiency, and the reliability study are being worked on at this time, I received today, the reliability study draft that needs to be sent to Eagle by the end of the calendar year, and then we can move forward through that process, and that's the goal right now. And then the station upgrades, we have until March to submit something to them, so we're working through on that as well. The two other deficiency, deficiencies are with the G Drive storage tank itself. This tank was built in 1994. One item is installation of a gasket on the hatch cover, which was never had one, and the other is installation of a mesh, of a new mesh spring on the overflow pipe, and that would also include a vacuum pressure relief mechanism. That current overflow has a screen on it, now the Eagle is saying it needs to be a finer mesh. Well, it's not a matter of taking the old one off to stick the new one on, you have to make sure the airflow is still the same, which means it has to be made bigger, which means it's going to take some cutting and torque change and some work on that, plus installation of the, of the vacuum breaker on the top. Williams Works has provided us an estimate not to exceed $6,000 for the engineering work on these two items. Their work would include the design and the construction inspection, and they will also work with Eagle to verify that these improvements are going to meet their Eagle's requirements, and also work with Eagle to get a time extension on this part of the work. And I know that Brian Ramirez from Williams Works has already contacted Wood Choi from Eagle, who's our, our district engineer, to ask for that extension. If he gets this approved tonight, they're looking at a, having the construction plans ready to go by mid-January, and then it'll be based after that on how quickly we can contract here and parts to do.
This is water and sewer?
This is water, yes.
Any questions for Dan? Motion for the storage tank improvement.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Very much.
Thanks, Dan. Six grand, just from having to do the Eagle's work. Boarding Commission, report, Leah.
Um, we got a...
Mark?
We didn't have planning, they canceled, did everything in the back up for once.
James?
I had no meetings.
Cliff? All I had was fire authority, we discussed the key card stuff, Mike and I had, um, water 425 discussions with the township on Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, actually went pretty well. There was another meeting scheduled for Wednesday, but we're rescheduling hopefully after the first of the year. So, it's coming along. That's all I have. Any questions on any of the budget or monthly reports?
Listen, yeah, a couple things. We have an emergency expenditure that we have to make last week. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I don't say it right, Brian. One of the tubes to one of the rotors in the aerator for one of the oxidation tanks just went kablooey. It, uh...
Can you spell kablooey?
Sorry for the technical terms.
So, the aerators we have are two big oval tanks, so there's, there's two of them in each tank. It's a big brush, looks like a lens airbrush.
Yep.
Because the tube runs down the middle of it, broken down. Went kablooey.
Probably because of bearing on the other side, start to see the gearbox is saying, "You're going to turn?"
One of two things, either the bearing fails, which we grease those and inspect them weekly per manufacturer's recommendation. The other thing is, this is a rotor that's been running 24/7 for the last 32 years, so...
And wasn't it like five years ago, we had...
It's the, it's the third one that's gone of the plant, yeah.
My first day here.
My very first day here, 2016. So, we've had three of them, two since I've been here, three of them have gone, and none of them have been twice. So, it's, it's all been just the ones, so we've got one more to break in.
So, would it be prudent to look at taking that precaution now?
Potentially. The fourth one is going to be the most difficult one to get at.
Put what in there?
We're anticipating about $30,000.
Yeah. But it's... Parts themselves are about 25. I do have a quote on those, I'm still working on them. So, yeah. I, I'd lay more towards 40.
And that's necessary, right?
It has to be.
Right now, we're only running on one ditch?
No, we're still running both ditches luckily, or got the redundancy of the second rotor on that one ditch. The other nice thing somewhat is colder water holds more dissolved oxygen, and the water's colder right now, so we've got the benefit of, of that happening. So, you get the bugs happy, you're free, keeps the bugs happy. So, that's coming down the pipe.
Thanks, Rick.
And then, I explained to the DDA, after meeting last week, there were some budget items, so basically, when we amended the budget later, we just had to clean some things up in their budget, because the way we had it budgeted, the way it's actually being calculated, or mainly with the Amity Street project, it was supposed to be, funds were supposed to be transferred from the DDA fund to the local street fund to, to complete that road project, but in actuality, the, the funds for Amity, the DDA share, were actually just paid directly out of the DDA fund, it didn't go like I would have wanted it to, but it just happened. So, I've already caught it, so when it's time to amend the budget later, we'll clean the budget up to address that. The good news, though, is, is that, you know, go mention in my management report, but the capital outlay expenses that we budgeted for next year, they've come, they've come in significantly less. The Amity project came in about $130,000 less for the DDA share than what they were supposed to initially pay for, it's about $130,000 less, so it allowed us to build the, it allowed us to fund the rest of it, and also allowed us to pay for the charging station, so, and I'll mention that in my management report.
Speaking of the bathrooms, they're, they're open, they're going to be open when we have the key card thing?
Yes.
Which is...
Right now, the parts are on order, there probably will be a slight backlog on the card readers, they are, because it's a card slash PIN, right now, they're about six, eight weeks from the manufacturer, just like a lot of other things out there, you're going to have to wait. Now, we could get everything on that, but that card reader, and still control it for unlock, lock time, that's just there if somebody needs to get it and override it, so there is a way that we could still do it, if we can get the rest of the parts, and at least get it on the time schedule for locking and unlocking. So, I'll work on it.
But we're using them like during the Santa visits when there's...
Yeah, when we have the events, yeah, when we have major, when we have events down there, we have it unlocked, but I mean, during the day when nothing's really going on right now, we're not, we're keeping it locked, but once the, once the, once the cards come in, once the readers come in, then we'll, then we'll accommodate.
Mike, I did have a couple of questions in recording your, your memo to us for Friday. One of them is, is the DDA has approved $5,000 for sidewalk reimbursement for the line check. Who's getting that $5,000?
It would be reimbursed to the project, his construction project, is how it was structured.
And why would we pay for a private citizen's side?
I would, I'll explain that in my manager, I was explaining my manager.
And then the next one is that we are working with Mr. Slagel regarding the brownfield plan, which is being, we're looking at another solution. Weren't these people supposed to have their financials kind of to us and what they looked at?
Yeah, let me...
It looks like you're spending some time doing research for a private funding, and I know you have a lot more to do in the city than maybe...
Yeah.
So, those are two concerns I have right there.
And I was going to explain that in my manager.
Okay. I'll go with the next one.
The city manager's report.
Sure. First off, I want to address Jason Diaz. We are grateful that Judge Suzanne Joseph Krieger in Ione County saw no merit, and the charges filed against Mr. Diaz and dismissed all of his charges, and we hope this gives us an opportunity to move forward, so I'm very thankful for that. And I know, I know Jason is as well, and I know Chief First is also. I'm looking at, for next year, when we, when we do our, when we do our budget, I'm looking at the possibility of moving our healthcare insurance into an insurance pool. Will it give us, will it give us cheaper rates? Probably not. Could we get a better plan for what we're paying? Maybe, maybe not. But I think the most important thing, what it does, is by being in the pool, is it really, it spreads risk amongst more people in the pool, so if we have, you know, we only have roughly 20 people in our plan, so anytime somebody, anytime there's a significant event within our plan, we, we run the risk of seeing significant increases to the premiums. So, this would allow us to basically spread that risk amongst the pool and many, many other people, and hopefully where, you know, you're seeing, roughly, we've been seeing anywhere between 3% to 5% increases annually in our, and we're being lucky because we haven't had anything, but we, in the last few years, we've seen about a 3% to 5% annual increase in our premiums. Hopefully, by being in the pool, you might see 1%, 2%, and it, and it minimizes that risk. So, it's something that I'm starting to research more on, and I do have some meetings planned after the first of the year to, to learn about it. So, there's that. I did fail to mention, at the, at the, at the last council meeting, that during that time period between that meeting and the meeting before, we did have our small urban meeting with MDOT, Kent County, and Rapid, and the, the Foreman Street, or the G Drive Project, we were able to move the Monroe Project to G Drive. G Drive will be, be up for paving next year in 2022, and then in 2024, we've had funds secured for about $385,000 for Foreman Street for a mill and overlay between G Drive and Beach Street. So, those are, those are two, those are two projects that we were awarded by MDOT for those, so good there. And then the DDA meeting, there are a couple of things that occurred at the DDA meeting. The first one I'll talk about is the charging stations. So, the DDA is going to take ownership of the charging stations that we have now. We are looking at replacing the two charging stations. The two, the charging stations we have now, they can only service one car, the new charging stations will be able to service two cars. Right now, we're keeping them in the same locations. We did discuss putting one over in the library lot, the DDA just kind of wanted to take a wait-and-see approach to see how the, to see how the, um, this, this pans out, to see if they're, just to see what the demand is. But all in all, they did, they did agree to do that. We will be, we will be charging for the, for the charging stations. We did meet with Carl Boss from Consumers Energy, he did give us a, what he recommended what we should charge, which is slightly above your home residential charging rates, but it doesn't necessarily, the rates, from what I understand, do not overprice us for somebody who's, who needs to use those chargers. We also discussed the, the line check project. So, to explain, kind of explain what's going on with the, with the line check project, as part of the project, Mr. Slagel has approached the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the Community Revitalization Program. He's done this project, he's done this project, he's done this for a number of his projects he's received funding for from, from MEDC. In the past, there's always been a provision that you just have to have a local contribution. They never really defined what the local contribution was. So, in this instance, now, in talking with the, with MEDC, it's more, they would, because of the number of projects that have been awarded in Lowell, we've been awarded a lot more projects than other areas of the state, and they have been adamant that if, if he wants to participate in this, they would like to see 10% local contribution from the city for his project. He's looking to seek about $300,000 from the state, so they're looking at about some, around $30,000 in some sort of incentives from us. We're very restricted into what we, what we can, what we can utilize public dollars for. Public improvements is an eligible expense, meaning sidewalks. The DDA did agree to contribute $5,000 for that right now. At the time, he did discuss possibly coming back for a brownfield, submit a brownfield plan to the city, however, it's more and more, it's not making sense for him to, to do that. It's almost costing more to actually have the, the plan filed than what he would actually seek in mitigation costs. So, I am working with him and the MEDC to try and find other ways we can meet that 10% threshold to assist him, so that is why I have approached the DDA on it, trying to help facilitate development in our downtown.
The historic district has helped him in the past.
Yes, but in this, in this instance, the HDC does not apply because it's not in the HDC. That's usually how we, you know, the, the previous projects that he's been awarded, it's either been an, he was able to get an industrial facility tax credit for Big Boiler because of, because of the manufacturing of the brewery, that's eligible, that's eligible. And then his other projects, he's been able to seek HDC funds, that's been the contribution. The, the MEDC, I mean, others, the MEDC, like I said, they really want to see 10% this time, and this is what we were trying to come up with.
Does it qualify because he's looking at creating a business on the first floor? Why it qualifies? Or is it, it was just all apartments and condos?
Yes, it's mixed use, so the only, so see, under the Community Revitalization Program, their biggest focus is mixed use. So, because this is, it would be retail, restaurants, so something on the first floor, and then residential on the second floor, those are the projects that the MEDC wants to see, and those are the ones that they participate in. So, that...
I used to be excited about MEDC money because it came with, well, it came with restrictions, like he built 14 apartments years ago. If you got that kind of money, you had to make the apartments at a certain level for a number of years, well, they got rid of all the restrictions, and now it's kind of like, okay, so you got enough money to swing this deal, you're still getting taxpayer benefit.
And tough.
And, yeah, it's like, whoa, I mean...